The New Majority Alliance, in conjunction with or in coordination with other organizations or associations, were in Lehigh two weeks ago. And the purpose of course then was to disseminate information to particularly Lehigh people and any other locations or the other people in the region. Today we are back. Why are we doing here again? We just happened to be in a different location. East County Library in Lehigh Acres and Donary Road. I only have two minutes, so I kind of want to bring to the debate. I want to thank you for coming, and I appreciate your presence. During the debate ladies and gentlemen, you will be given an opportunity to ask candidates questions with the help of the people who are on the internet etc. Having said that ladies and gentlemen, one of the things we must remember, when people are committed in their communities, we must recognize that. And ladies and gentlemen, I would want to, if I fail to recognize the young lady who has done tremendous work in this community, she is a community oriented in the video. When the time came that we were supposed to have a debate in Lehigh Acres, I called this young lady Carol Cherry Go, and I said, "We need a place." She said, "Michael, within twenty-four, not twenty-four, within two hours, I will find me a location." She came to this library here, said, "Fill out the papers on behalf of the New Majority Alliance." And here we are today. Ladies and gentlemen, give her a round of applause. Ladies and gentlemen. Having said that ladies and gentlemen, I will get out of here, out of the building from where I stand. Having said that, I want to take the opportunity to welcome ladies and gentlemen, the President of the New Majority Alliance, Charlie Flores. Charlie, would you come to the floor? In official standing position, President, Charlie is a candidate, Lee County School Board, District 2. Charlie, here's mine.
I'll make this quick. The New Majority Alliance was formed by about four different organizations. The Hispanic American Citizens Council, the African Network, the Caribbean Radio, okay, what other group is there? The Education Center. Plus, we've ended up with about eighteen different groups that have got together to work together, look together at the debates. I would like to recognize the Lehigh Acres Gazette, who is covering it. I'd like to recognize Jessa, who has recently moved. Special thanks to Mike Teffrey and Caribbean Radio that has covered every event we were having. Peter? Girl? I'd like to introduce our moderator for today, the questions, Peter DeNiro.
Thank you so much, Mr. President of the New Majority Alliance. As you might have heard, they were discussing who is going to moderate this, and you know, Siri and all that, but now I might as well, right? Okay. So, as the chairman said, my name is Dr. Peter DiAgui, I am a graduate professor at DCU. And I've been involved in this debate for a while because I really do care about education. It's through education that I came here all the way from Africa, and it's through education that I have, I make my daily bread. It's just that, but it's very important, we take it very seriously. And I know all of you do it too. We have met with these candidates before. We met at Quality Life Center. So this is our second meeting. How are you ladies and gentlemen? Are you ready? Are you guys ready? Very good. The format is different. The format is slightly different. This is not the same way as we had it last time. This time you all will have to answer the same questions. Everybody answers the same, same questions. And that is going to be, alright? Every question is two minutes. Two minutes. Except for the closing remarks, which will be three minutes. Alright? So. So, originally it was set up that Dan Sinclair would be the one to moderate this. And when he was running, we thought, "Do it." But now that he is here, the format still remains, I'll give it to Dan Sinclair, okay?
Okay, thank you. Apologize for getting here a couple of minutes late. We had a little issue that developed over the last twenty-four hours, and we had to set up a press conference immediately following the debate here today. So it took a little bit of time we weren't expecting to have. So there actually is going to be a press conference here right after the debate. Just an FYI, so we should have some more pressure on throughout the debate, okay? Oh yes, I think I better do that too. So please turn up the volume on your phones. Won't do that at the same time. There we go, our timekeeper. Alright, so we have not hit any of the subjects yet, right? So we're ready to do the introductions? Alright, good. I know, it's great where the moderators asking the candidates questions. Alright, so all the introductions have been done, so we'll start with the candidate. Introductions, you have two minutes. Go ahead and tell us about yourself, start with Jane.
Thank you, my name is Jane Cuckle. I know many of you because I served on the school board for twelve years. And four years ago, decided not to run. I was in a new marriage, the school district was doing very well, and I was just looking for somebody to step in and make it continue. Over the last four years, things have not gone as was expected by me or I think many of the people in the community. We've seen a decline in the academics across the board. And we had some other issues too. When the team came to do accreditation, the first time ever that I can remember that the district was not accredited the first time around. There were five deficiencies that needed to be corrected, and three of them related to how the board operates. And we will not receive full accreditation until they are fixed. One of them has to do with culture, one of them has to do with how they treat each other at the board table, and the third one, probably most importantly, has to do with using data to make decisions. In fact, accreditation team called the board "data-rich and analysis poor." And then we have the issue related to building buildings. The district's growing about two thousand students a year. And now we find ourselves four years later, four, two, seven schools behind meeting the growth needs of our students. When I was on the board, we also had a growth explosion. Over an eight-year period of time, we built twenty schools and eighteen bell bouts. All on time, under budget, and it went smooth. Now we have no clue where we're going to get money to build the needed schools, and students continue to come forward. So as I looked over the last few years, it began to concern me, and also over the last year, I've had many calls from colleagues who have said, "Well, thank you."
I know Mark's a stickler on the timing, but we'll give you an extra five or ten seconds to finish up. So he's not going to steal the mic from me, neither am I. Richard?
Good afternoon, thank you for spending your afternoon with us. Nice to see new faces here in Lehigh. Usually on these forums, we see the same faces, but I see different ones here today. So I'm Richard Dunmire, and I'm a candidate for District 6. These are the things that I can bring to the board. I'm a businessman, I'm a war businesser. All my life I've been a business. Also an educator, fifty-seven years, I finished year fifty-seven. In business, we need to operate $1.4 billion budget as a business. As was mentioned, we need money. I know where that money is. I think that I can go out and find that money, bring the people in who can help us operate a $1.4 billion business. I operate a million dollar business, that's tough, and that's a lot of money. I write the budget, but I stay within that budget, I assure you. I don't borrow money, I don't have credit. My credit rating is top. We have to pay those bills, we can't pay them with a credit card. We have to find a way, I have that way. I hope that you asked me today to answer all of those questions that I just brought up. I have a way to solve the graduation rate. I promise you, ask me today, thank you so much.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, my name's Don Armstrong. I served on Lee County School Board from 2010 to 2014. In my time that I served on the board, I fought against the high-stakes testing, I fought against common court, I fought to keep from raising your taxes. But one of the things that brings, that I'm very key on, is I'm a parent. And I bring something very different to the board that this board's never seen. A blue collar worker, I'm a plumber by trade, I'm a project manager, which means I do have to run a budget, I have to maintain it, and I do have to stay within my budget. These are skills that I can bring to the board. And I'm actually privileged today because my kids actually said, "Yeah daddy, we'll come with." My kids are back there today, so filming this for me. That is one of the things that drives me and keeps me going, why I wanted to run again. I see a lot of problems in the school district, a lot of issues that we need to resolve. They talk about raising taxes, that's not the answer. Let's face it, if you give government more money, they'll spend more money. That's not the solution we need. You heard about all the profit that was being built in all the schools? Well, the problem is, that's why we have all the debt that we do now, because they built a bunch of schools without having the money to build it. We need to be more fiscal conservative with our money, and I look forward to your vote on August 30th for Don Armstrong. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Charles Daly. And I'm a candidate for this District 6 election. As Mr. Armstrong says, that he brings something different to the table, that's something that it has never had before. I bring something different that has never been had before. People tend to shy away from the usage of diversity as it relates to representation on the school district. I bring that, but not that just that. I am qualified. Dr. Cuckle talks about the accreditation process, which she failed to realize, which she failed to talk about, was there was one major one. And that one was, there was what is called a required action, that the school district does not have a process when a board member goes off of the reservation to bring them back in, which creates havoc. Allowing board members to go off on their own and develop their own process. That's a problem. I have served on the accreditation process for over twenty years. I serve as a lead evaluator for districts and for schools. I think another thing here, I have served, you have individuals that talk about, I can hit the ground running. I have been running for the past thirty years. Tried, tested, and have come out, I have been placed in the most difficult situations. Got the worst press, got the worst press. But the most important thing is that those places that I have served have been outstanding. I have been selected as the Members' School Principal of the Year, as well as the Administrator of the Year for the state of Florida. Thank you very, thank you very much.
I heard that you dress as good as rest, so yeah. Alright, thank you. Would you pass the microphone down to Richard, please? So our first set of questions is going to start with, what triggered you to join this race? You each have two minutes, just like your opening. So what triggered you to join this race, and what are your key campaign issues? Please explain.
Lifetime, lifetime as an educator, fifty-seven years, right? More years than most of the people sitting here. Not my passion is to be on the board, to use all of these skills that I've developed in these many, many years. I hope, you don't, if you don't look at my age, you look at my wisdom. That's not original, that came from someone else. Someone else asked me about my age, versus standing next to me, "Oh, what about your wisdom?" I can bring this wisdom, especially in financial arena. I'm a successful businessman, as I mentioned. I know how to handle those budgets. And as I said, I work with and deal with and write million-dollar budgets, but that's a long ways from a billion. I know where Jim Nathan is, I know where the CEO of Tico is. They will help us, I've already asked them. If I bring to you the figures, will you plug them in? And I know when they plug them in, they're going to have a big laugh and say, "Right here, right here." One of it will be, one of the big ones is administration. There's some waste out there, but I don't believe it's on purpose. The people that are involved in it really believe what they're doing is right. What we need to do is command and make sure these things are right. Thank you.
What made me decide to run again? Well, again, that's simple, my kids. Not just my kids, your kids and the community. I sit at home and I watch the school board meetings. And I'd see the public go up there and talk to the board members. And the public was not being responded to. And I'd listen to them talk behind the doors, and the public, they don't feel like they're being acknowledged, and their concern is being heard. Well, that's something that I decided was very important. Because it is called, when you look at the school districts building, "Public Education." The public deserves to have a voice. Well, that's what I do represent to the board, I go listen to the public, I always have. I think that's a key issue. Plus, the other issues that we need to start looking at, they talk about raising taxes again. And I sat up there one time, and I listened to them talk about, "It's only an extra $50 per household." Only $50? Well, that's some people's grocery money, that's their electric bill. I'm a single dad too, I know what it's like to struggle. And I think citizens of Lee County deserve to have a voice up there. Somebody who will listen to them, who understands what it's like to struggle. Someone who understands they're going home and sitting down with their kids in the afternoon, doing their homework, and what the kids are going through, and how much they're stressing out over the tests. Someone who's there, who will listen to the teachers, the custodians, the bus drivers, because each one of them matter. That is why I'm running, because I am someone who will listen to everybody's opinion, not just the rich. Thank you.
Why am I running? Change? Change? How long? Not long. We must be able, or we must begin to look through the eyes of us. That's been missing throughout the history of this district. I bring to this table the wisdom, as Mr. Dunmire talked about, the struggle, all of my life, that Mr. Armstrong's talked about, and the qualifications that Dr. Cuckle talks about. So all of them have those individuals, but I bring to you the collectiveness that I offer. Working with students, I have in my years lost twenty-one students that I've looked over and they've not looked back. None of them can say that. That's experience. Working in the trenches, working right there with parents who have been downtrodden, but need a voice. Not dealing with a $450 million budget and not being able to know, I was the first one to talk about it, and have been talking about it by myself. I'm glad to hear where others are beginning to say some things about it. But that's the point, plus the hundred million that is on top of that. There's something wrong? We can do things differently, we need to go outside of the box. And I bring that. And that's it for right now.
Mr. Daly, I can attest to that too. Well, first of all, I kind of led into this in the beginning. I bring a background of success, and I just want to give you a couple of data pieces that are pretty critical. When I left the district, we had eighty-five percent A and B schools, no D and no F. Today we have sixty-seven percent A and B schools, eight D and one F. Now the level playing field is how we compare to everybody else in the state. When I left the district, we were ranked seventeenth, and today we're ranked thirty-eighth. So I bring a background of success. When I came on the board, we were a C district. Worked our way up to an A, maintained an A for three years. One of the top continuing progress districts in the state, and recognized as that. I bring also, I know the district. I can hit the ground running, as I say, that's a cliche overused, but I know how the board operates. I will not have a learning curve. I'm also a team builder, and as we move from five to seven board members, five reporting directly to their individual districts and two at large, that brings a whole new dynamic to everything that will happen at the board table. I'm a mediator, a consensus builder. I know the history of how things were done, not that you keep doing them, but that needs to come into play when you're making decisions about doing things in the way. And as I was going through my materials, when I decided to run, I found this which can attest to that. An article that says, "Cuckle sees as a consensus builder on the school board." So I do my homework to stay informed, I do, I'm good at that analysis. I like to make decisions to move us forward, and I would look forward to representing you to bring this district back to an A district and the pride of the community.
Okay, so the next question is, consistency on the board versus new ideas? This has been coming up recently in different discussions, including the speech of BuPAC on Thursday. Some people say consistency on the board is the most important thing, and some people say having new ideas on the board or a new group on the board is a better idea. How do you feel?
Well, that makes emotion on that one, to be quite honest. You do need a consistency on the board, you need people that will work together, but you have to have those fresh ideas working together. That means you need to bring new people in that show the same ideas, that can work together as a team. She talks about, my opponent talks about being a team builder, but there's parts of that that I disagree with. You can't be a team builder and be a rubber stamper, which is what we had before on the board. We need people that actually will have different ideas, who can sit there, talk with each other, debate, and come up with something to work together, find something collaborative to work on the same idea and same decision-making. Our students are the most important thing. So to me, these fresh ideas, because it's a different time. We have different scores out there, different tests, that's why this district's not an A anymore. That's the one piece nobody's going to tell you about. 2012, the state of Florida changed cut scores. Thirty-nine school districts in the state of Florida dropped a letter grade. So things are changing, and we need people out there that's going to change with the times and understand what difficult things we are facing. So that's why I look forward to your vote on August 30th.
You can actually give it to Richard, will you?
I think you're talking about term limits. In my case, I don't even buy green bananas, so I don't have to worry, I could have to worry about maybe in twelve, fifteen years. So, can I for term limits? I think that has to come from the public, that has to come from you, not our decision. If you're running for the board, that would be a foolish answer. I believe that could be a rough ride, and it should come from the public, from us. Yes, we need fresh people on here, but, as I said, for those that have been here a while too, they've done a job, consistency. But again, a decision should be made, president's room, not last. Thank you.
You know, I don't think it matters so much whether we have the same people or we have a new group of people. There's a lot of wisdom, they rotate the years in which different board members are elected so that you do get a turnover. I think what matters is how you pull together as a group on the board to make things happen in a business-like way. I think the success that we had before was that we were laser-focused on our goals, and we all agreed to them, and when we made decisions about budget, it was decisions based on what are our goals and how do we design the budget around our goals. We were laser-focused on being future-focused, in that we really analyzed the data around growth, new growth, where are we going to build schools, so that we were ready when that situation happened to us. We were laser-focused on making our kids ready for the job market, whether they go to work in Italy or California or wherever they go. And once you have those goals in mind, then you pull together as a team, and everybody talks about what they each bring to the table to help accomplish those goals, and we make it happen as a group. You don't make decisions when the board president misses a meeting and reverse what was made the week before. You work together, you respect each other, you trust each other, and move forward.
Well, the question was consistency, not term limits. And so let me talk about consistency. Consistency means that we can be consistent as long as we are making the right kinds of decisions. Now, if you look at it in another sense, we have developed a $450 million deficit. Now I'm going to keep hammering that home, I talked to you about it Kevin the other day. I'm going to keep talking about it. But that's not consistent, as we continue to use that credit card. That is consistent, using the credit card over and over and over and over again. Consistency means that we are not looking at what is right in front of our eyes. With the growth here in East Lehigh is simultaneous with the growth in South, but they choose to spend seven to eleven million dollars on the land, and we own the land in Gateway, and we own the land in Alva. Something is wrong. See, something's wrong. We're not making the right kinds of decisions. Now that's not consistent, but only, that's not consistent. The wisdom that I bring is, I have chaired the Equity and Diversity Team for this district for fifteen years. I have led, I have led schools in the Advanced Ed. I know what it takes to develop good schools and good districts through the experience that I have gained for over twenty years through the Advanced Ed process. I have worked in every job that was given me and been successful. That's consistency.
Okay, so our next question, and we'll start with Mr. Daly, if you're okay with that.
Oh yeah, I'm ready. I'm ready, yeah, I'm just getting started.
There we go, you're getting all fired up. Alright, so our next question is about who you are running with. There's been a lot, there's been a lot of talk about different candidates running in teams or supporting each other, endorsing each other. And one of the questions brought to us is, are you running in a team? And what do you think of candidates endorsing other candidates?
That is an outstanding question. In the BuPAC meeting yesterday, and I don't have to pop a call in there, he said that Mr. Dozier talks about consistency, and said that it was important because they had a superintendent, which by, you know, I need to remind you, which received a golden parachute of $500,000. And that's consistent, yeah, that's consistent from the And that's consistent, you know, that's consistent from the past. But the teams have come up with individuals that are trying to get the block vote, those persons that want to monopolize the vote on the school board. I'm running because it's good for kids. I'm running because it's good for parents to have the have-nots. There are individuals out there that talk about, we don't need to do anything with the federal dollars. And that means that it impacts, it impacts, my friend, it impacts the have-and-have-nots. Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV, microprogram. When you take those away, the school just has to find those funds to support. Who does those programs, what does those programs impact? It impacts the have and the have-nots. See, you just can't do that. So I'm running for Charles Daley. Let that be known. I'm running for the students of Lee County, for the parents of Lee County. Now, I'm not going to sit here and point fingers and say you're running, you're running, I could, but that's not the right thing to do. You shouldn't be sticking each other, you should be working together. If we're going to check the town, we need to set it right here.
Would you repeat the question?
The question is, are you running alone or are you running in a group? And are you, well, there's one part I missed, which is, are you endorsing candidates in other districts? And how do you feel about candidates endorsing other candidates? Apology, I missed one section in there.
That used to be a test, too.
Okay.
I think if you followed me around, you would know that I'm running for myself. And I don't, I don't know that I have an opinion. You know, as you go to these forums, you begin to listen to the same things you are. And there are other candidates here from other races as well. And you begin to see who you think best fits your needs, or who would be best for the job. And I think that's natural. I have not endorsed anybody and will not endorse anybody. I don't think it's appropriate or ethical to do so.
We'll just mess it up.
But I think you're not, you don't endorse anybody. I thought she endorsed me this time.
Consistency, endorse me. See what I saw there? Sorry, huh?
You know, am I running as a block or something? Yeah, kind of. I'm running for the parents, I'm running for the students, the teachers. I'm running to make sure everybody has an equal voice. You know, as I say in my, all my literature, I'm a common man. Because I listen to everybody and what they have to say, because I think everybody's important. I think everybody deserves an equal voice, you know, down on that school board. And it doesn't matter whether you're a Democrat, you're a Republican, you're not partisan, a Libertarian. Everybody deserves an equal voice. I don't believe it's right. That was part of my problem when I first ran for the school board, is I seen up there a lot of rubber stamping. A lot of people collaborating together, and I didn't like that. I thought it was better, you mean individuals up there, people who were going to think for themselves and work for the community. Because after all, ladies and gentlemen, you are the boss of the board. Don't ever be misunderstood by that. You are the boss. So I think it's very important that each board member or each candidate actually runs for themselves and not as a block. And I can tell you that there are ones out there that do run as a block. Like Charles says, I'm not pointing fingers, because that's wrong. We need to set the example. But I also refuse to endorse anybody, and I've never gone out and asked for anybody's endorsement. I run as an individual, not as a team. Thank you.
As I look around the room, I see many candidates for other offices, not just for the board. This is my seventieth event, seventy-first event that I've attended since I've started this campaign. I think that everyone invites me to meet great. I like that. It means I haven't supported anyone. I think these two gentlemen right here will tell you that when we begin this campaign, you've always said the same thing. Richard, my friend, never will I say anything wrong. They are my friends. I don't know this lady real well, I just remember her as a teacher and a junior on the board. But I look at all of these folks as my friend. I talk about Richard, what did Richard do, not what the rest can do. And that's what I'm saying to you. From my heart, I say to you, this is what I can do, I support you. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
May I ask for that last part that you?
Sure. Twenty seconds?
Ten.
Yeah, okay.
I will not endorse. I believe that we stand on our own. As I've indicated, that you will hear each of us say certain things. Grab those things that are important, and then when you make your selection, it will come out to Charles Daley at District Six.
All right, next question is, you have been campaigning together for a long time now. Are there, are there any particular issues that you have heard your opponents mention or opponent mention that you feel you need to address here? This is your chance. So last person to speak technically was Dr. Cuckle, but all right.
Is that what you wanted to do?
Right, what were your names? No, my answer to that is that, no. But I'm saying, I'm Richard. Please listen from Richard's heart, what he can bring to the board. The others, same way. And I feel the same way about them. They each bring good things to the board. I just feel that the board needs Richard, because I can bring, I talked about finances continually. I'm an educator, basically, in the classroom fifty-seven years. These finances, we get them straightened out, brings to my classroom what we need. Thank you.
I can't think of any right now. I think if I do, I'll work it into whatever other question you might have.
Sure. Next, I'll.
Let's mix it up, why not? Can I think of anything my opponent said? Yeah, actually, I haven't heard one of them say vote for Donald Armstrong yet. That I have. But no, really. I can't think of anything right offhand, because you know what? Part of being a board member and a candidate is you have to be a leader. And that means setting a good example for our kids. And to sit there and poke at candidates for different things, that'd be wrong in so many ways. We're supposed to be above all that. And there's going to be differences of opinions. But that's what makes this country great, is because we can have different opinions, still be civil with each other, and understanding. And at the end of the day, whoever wins, which will be Donald Armstrong, will still shake hands when we walk away from each other with respect. So no, I have nothing to say there.
I know you're all waiting. I know. That's the consistency. That's what you look for. I, too, like Dr. Cuckle, will not elaborate at this time, but will infuse it with my comments or other questions that you will clearly carry here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Start with you, Tom. And the next question is, the golden parachute. Former superintendent, has not happened with other superintendents recently. If it comes up again, would you be in support?
First, let's get this squared away. The golden parachute. Matter of fact, our state legislators made a law so this never happened again, because of what happened here in Lee County. I was actually at that board meeting when this happened, when the superintendent, Dr. Jim Browder, actually resigned. They also found him in violation of his own contract, and they still paid him out. That's right, folks, imagine that. You quit a job and you get paid almost five-hundred-thousand dollars to leave. I want a job like that. You know, so would I do that? Absolutely not. In good conscience, I have, when I was on the board, we had a superintendent resign. I asked for a spendback, too. You're not getting the taxpayers' money. Because that actually goes to our kids, our kids' education. That's what's important here. It's not giving the superintendent a golden parachute or any other tax incentives. It's making sure our kids have a great education, and putting that money where it belongs, into the schools. So the answer, no, I would not, ever. Thank you.
That's a running, if you will remember, I was the first one to start talking about this. The golden parachute, I don't fault the superintendent. And he's not blamed. As a person, you want to get as much as you can get if you feel like you've done a job. I don't fault that. I don't blame that individual who's superintendent. But my efforts would be looking at those persons on that board that made that consistent decision to give it to him. That made that consistent decision whether we had paid him or whether we had not paid him like we should have. That shows inconsistent decision-making in terms of rewarding a person who you felt did a job. So that's two areas. The next area is to pay a person whether he did the job or whether he didn't do the job. To give him five hundred, up to five-hundred-thousand dollars is reckless. It's reckless and abandonment. Why was it abandonment? That money could have been used for children. That's wrong. No, I would not give it to him.
Absolutely not. We've learned a lesson, expensive lesson, which should never happen again. And legislators are going to make sure of that. I have to kind of remember that your brothers are a boss now, kind of at the state level. So we've had, I mean, county will always have that way. He's up on the state level. And in the past, we've always had a cliche here in Lee County that when you move up and, you know, if you mess up, then you move up. I haven't seen that happen, but definitely, we've learned a lesson. I can't ever imagine that happening again. Let's move on. Thank you.
Well, first of all, I'd like to say a couple things. The figure that I hear hanging around is five-hundred-and-some thousand. But we need to get the facts around that, because according to state law, when you leave the district, you are paid for whatever simply you have accumulated. And for somebody that was there as long as Jim Browder, I'm sure that was probably a year's worth of salary in terms that there were no limitations on what he could accumulate. So you have to deduct from that, first of all, a hundred-and-fifty thousand, I believe that's what he was making. And second law, secondly, I grew up with a continual understanding of you get what you paid for. I was on the board the whole time Jim Browder was there. I hired him and was there and agreed to his contract when he was fired. When we hired him, the whole district was in disarray. He was local, people knew him, and he said he would come in for a very inexpensive salary, about forty to fifty thousand dollars less than what everybody else at that level made with that size of district. And he stayed there for the time that he was here. Now, you get what you pay for. When I left the district with Jim Browder, eighty-five percent of our schools were A and B, no D and F. Today, sixty-seven percent of our schools are A and B, eight D and one F. When I left the district with Jim Browder, we were ranked seventeenth. Today, we are ranked thirty-eighth. Jim Browder was the CEO of a very large, one-point-four-billion-dollar corporation. He did receive a severance pay. It's not the total amount in that dollar amount. But he worked all eight years under what was the going rate for a superintendent.
Who started last time? Was it Donovan? Okay, so we'll start with Mr. Daley. Now, Mr. Daley, this question was written, obviously, by a college professor, because it's really long, it has about eight million subparts, and I'm just going to read the whole thing for you. You need me to read it again, I won't. So here's the deal. The opt-out process. Decision was made and then reversed. Are you in favor or against the opt-out process? Opting out or testing? So yes to opting out, if we had stuck to it, we would have lost a lot of much-needed federal funds. These funds would be there to support programs to benefit the minority children. If this finally happens, don't you think that would hurt those children? Lack of testing would adversely affect the quality of our candidates and their acceptability in prestigious colleges. Are you in favor of this in spite of the consequences? What benefits, what alternatives would you give? Believe it or not, there's another section here.
Chris is saying, yes, I want to give that answer.
Because if you can, it's like a jump on this one. No to opting out. If you oppose the opt-out, are you then in favor of excessive testing? You have a middle ground, can you explain it? It's long, sorry.
Okay, no, it's okay. Four-hundred-and-fifty-million dollars in debt. We receive eighty-five million. You are responsible for finding ways of getting that money back to support those programs. It just does not impact the title programs, which affect the have and the have-nots. But it impacts the maintenance of your building. And just opting out, just to raise your hand to vote in order to collect votes, is not the good thing, that's not the best thing. You need a board member that will be able to think about what's going to happen. We think reactionary rather than proactive. I would like to look at ways where we would be able to enhance student achievement as it relates in the accreditation process and deal with Section Five of that accreditation process, which deals with the continuous improvement. The teacher facilitates the learning process, and then the test is given, and then we evaluate. I do not believe in the high-stakes testing, which has been a result of another issue dealing with Common Law. I have a problem with that. It went off into another atmosphere. That's a problem, which resulted in teachers' performance pay, school grades, which have an impact on the teacher that now feels, oh, I got to do what I have to do in order to raise his scores. That's a problem. We shouldn't be doing that. Candidates are impacted.
Thank you.
First of all, I don't believe in doing anything illegal, especially if it's going to come back on the person. Opting out, absolutely, should be an option legally. We need to work towards that. And you're the folks that can make that happen. You can accomplish this. Our legislators can accomplish this. I have a great relationship with our legislators. Spend a lot of time up in Tallahassee, because I head up an organization that needs help from legislators. They can opt us out of it. They can cause that to happen. And that's where we need to go, is to those folks that can do that. A letter, I spoke, I speak to these legislators often, and they say, if something comes up, if they get three letters or three phone calls. if they get three letters or three phone calls, that's a great thing. We're going to look into it. If they don't get any, they get one. So there's one or three people here. If that's what we're going to do, and I think we should, opt out of it legally, legally, legally. And if we can do that, through our legislators, go, just call their office, give them a message, and that'll guarantee you that, that they read these. I know Matt Caldwell, proud to say that he was a former student of mine. He reads every email he gets, and the same with all of our legislators. Please take that over. I think that's the answer. Thank you.
That, that decision was one of the decisions that influenced the accreditation committee in talking about data, data rich and analysis core. I'll tell you, when I watched that board meeting, I was heart sick because I didn't hear one question. What does this test test? How do we use it? Which students take it? What do we do with the information? How, if we use that information either to inform instruction or staff development to help us get better? You don't just give all the tests away as, as well as you don't bring tests in, that you don't know what you're going to do with them. And that's what the board should have been about, an analysis, each of those tests, and maybe then a modification of tests that they felt didn't fit that purpose. Do they really help our students to get better? Do they really help our teachers to have a better, better understanding of the type of information that kids should know or the way in which to teach? It should all be used for continual improvement. That's what we're all about. Let's get better, let's get better. If you don't test at all, you don't have any. It's like if you don't know where you're going, any road will get you there. If you don't test, you have nothing to, to build upon in terms of getting better for our students.
Oh, I'd be more than happy to take this. Let's get this straight real quick. First, the test was, when we opted out of that test, that was well after the accreditation. Second, when you're talking about, you know, we have to look at that test to see what that test is and all, guess what, people? None of us see it. None of us, the teachers doesn't see it, us parents, we do not see that test. I can't even tell you. Now, my kids don't take the test. One of the things they tell you is, if the kids don't take the test, that they're not going to graduate to the next grade. Two years in a row, my kids haven't taken the test. Next year, they're going to sixth grade. So that's false information in itself. There's a lot of things you guys hear out there that's false. One of the problems with the test is it's so flawed. And listen to teachers, you have to teach to the test. They're having issues with this. So, and it all rhymes with Common Core and the high-stakes testing. Yes, I opted out. I opted my own kids out. Because when you look at this test, you look at around seventy percent of minority students fail this test. You start looking at different states who are now telling the government, we don't want to test no more. It's flawed. You look, listen to the presidential candidates now who are talking about, we need to fix this education system. It's flawed. And they're talking about this high-stakes testing. The governor at that time started talking about that because now they're realizing it's flawed. So you know what Big County did? We was at the forefront of all this. We said it at the first time, there's a problem with this. We stood up. Well, I do want to remind everybody on something. December sixteenth, seventeen seventy-three, is when our forefathers stood up, broke the law for the Boston Tea Party. And look where we are today because they took a stand. We took one that day and we made a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so here's where, oh, I'm sorry. So here's what we're going to do now. We're going to pass out comments, our question cards. So audience can write down questions and pass them off, and we will ask them. Now, do we have any members of the press here? Where are you from? Oh, okay, good. So we have been asking philosophy, if press could ask a question directly. So while these are being handed out, we'll let that fly. Do you have a question you want to ask the candidates?
My name's Robert. Here's a publisher and the owner of Lee Highers with that. I have one question to ask. I wish I would be able to ask them last, for that. It's about respect and trust. Let me get to where I'm going with this question. There was an incident in Lee Highes about them making a video, they were talking about the basketball team. We lost, because of all the stuff that was going on, we lost a very good basketball coach. We lost rest of coaches. We lost a athletic director. And it seemed like, you know, the policy is the principal makes the decision. That puts him in the handle. She asked for help. She was overridden by certain members of administration. And she had to do that because, you know, or she was going to lose her job, a simple doubt about everything. This is called respect and trust. There is no, there's very little respect and trust for principals, especially for the ones who need help. Question one from Lee Highes. And it goes down and goes up. Trust goes up. Trust and respect go up and down. We'll let it fly. How do we fix respect and trust? That's with our teachers, our principals, our, I mean, we deal with kids all the time. How do we fix that? Now we have this problem with South Florida minors. Okay? There are two different issues I understand, but they're handled, we've handled so differently. And, but, the one, the one Lee Highes, one of them turned out because, you know, she's a good principal. And we've lost good people because of this incident. They left because they don't feel trust. They don't feel trust from the principal. They don't feel respect from the school board. When we asked certain school board members to look into things, they refused to. We, I asked certain people in the district to look into things as media. The answer is, I got back. We're looking into it and it's now been months. So how to fix respect and trust? It's a really long question.
All right, so who wants to take that one first? Yeah?
You know, other than Dr. Cucko, I think I'm the only one that has sat in the principal's chair. I, I, I think the trust factor must go both ways. And when you're dealing with students, you must always provide a safe and orderly environment for all of your students and your staff. When you are asking for help, it is the district's responsibility to provide that assistance. Now, in all honesty, sometimes all board members don't get that information. And, and I understand that. I've been in that spot before. But there are other board members who get it and twist it to their own, to their own benefit. I think what happens here in both situations that we must provide the safe and orderly environment for all of our students. The games, the videotaping, the coach's responsibility to monitor his kids, principal's responsibility, athletic director's responsibility, the, the issue at South. You know, when I was a principal, I used to assign custodians, Mr., where's Dr. Druss? I used to assign custodians at the restrooms because that's where the issues take place. Restrooms, cafeterias, the bus ramp. You assign those places where the high probability of inappropriate behavior will take place. Now, when we're not doing that, that's a problem, Dr. Druss. That's a real problem. But I think that it is incumbent on the school district to provide that assistance rather than taking information from a board member and micromanaging and telling them to do something else. That's where the problem is.
That's a tough one. You know, my experience is that trust and respect come from fairness and consistency. And in a district this size, whether you're dealing with students or you're dealing with staff or you're dealing with anybody along the way, if you're not consistent, then you lose the trust and respect of folks. And above all, if you're not fair. Everybody needs to be heard. All sides need to be heard and discussed. And some kind of discipline or, as a result, whatever happens as a result of that has to be consistent with how you would handle it regardless of which school you're in. Sometimes the public and some, a lot of times the public and sometimes the board members, as was said, don't get all the information. And that probably is the missing piece in there. And so I, I'm not sure of all the details that you're talking about in there, but when you treat everybody the same way, all those circumstances are all, always not the same way, so there have to be some exceptions. And you're consistent about it. I think you have a good leg to stand on.
I think we need to look outside of the system. When someone is convicted of a crime and there's too much prejudice, but then the system removed it, removed the trial, so to speak. I don't call this a trial, but we need to move this so some people who actually are involved in education, maybe up to Collier County or on, so where there's, because the pressure here, when you're done, and the pressure is so tremendous from the parents, the coaches, students, from everyone, hard, hard to make a good judgment. As I said, I've been there. I lost a state wrestling championship to the loss of a student that was accused of something. After the fact, we found out it wasn't him. So when he lost a scholarship, I lost a state championship. I think this needs to be moved, like I said, to another county where the people are not prejudiced. They don't know that the folks that are involved at all. I think they can make a better decision. Thank you.
Trust in this path. Now, from a little bit that I do understand about your question and what you're talking about, you know, the biggest problem is, I've seen where district personnel, parents, and different people have gone asking for help. A lot of times they don't get, as a board member, at the time when I was a board member, I'd have district personnel come to me and go, Don, I have an issue. And you'd sit down and talk to you somewhere. Okay, fine. We'd go sit down and talk. And they'd tell me that they tried to reach out to different people to get the answers or to get help, and they couldn't, or they were scared to. They were scared to lose their job. And some of these were even senior people who's been there for a long time. And I had to go fight for them. And I'd have to do it in a way that was, well, didn't throw the rain out there. And I'd go up with ideas to where, you know, I'd talk to the superintendent, why don't we do some type of hotline? So these people can call in anonymously so we can figure out what's going on and try to get help out there. They didn't want to do it. You know, I tell them, you know, it's not micromanaging. I, you know, the board's not supposed to be involved in every single decision. But after a while, these people have no walls to turn. That's our job, is to actually get them answers and try to help them and get them in the right direction without feeling like they're going to lose their job, get fired. We're supposed to be there to help the community. I still get the same phone calls to this day. People want me to help them out because they get scared. You know, and I think even as candidates, it's still our responsibility to try to help them where we can. Because these people, they really, you know, most, majority of the people that work for Lee County School District are great people. And they work hard. And they're very dedicated. And I, from one to San Burke, proud that I've served them for four years. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, sorry, you've interrupted your topic. I've already. I, I, I don't know. I swear I'm not saying to you, oh. Okay, so we have a bunch of questions. One of these was asked specifically, yeah, oh, yeah, we'll get that. I just want to give you a chance to go through these questions while we're, while the next question's being asked. At least we have, we'll take the name one second. So, let's see, we'll review this stack. And we won't have time to answer all of these, so I'm guessing you can probably pick, what, the top two, three? Whatever you think you can squeeze into one, one, two-minute response.
I'll answer this first.
Okay, before you do that, we have one more question from the press, so we're going to do that one first. And you might have to cap this answer at one minute just for immediacy. Okay, we're going to cap it one minute. Is that okay with the timer and number on y'all? Okay.
I represent the North Rock community radio station, moved to our community. My question is, first, I'd like to make sure to say something very positive about the board. When teachers are talking, when we do parent teaching conferences, say something positive before we tell what's going on. I know all these individuals. I consider two of them friends and two of them associates. And we're not choosing a less valuable board. Do you look at it good? My question is about single number district election, which is taxation without representation. The school board and county commission has practiced this for quite some time. And yes, and yet although the school board addressed it by introducing five and two at-large, two at-large still does not make sense. Two at-large ensures that most likely that person would probably come from one party, come from one area where the order of the strong. That is taxation without representation. When you have single number district election, the people can hold you accountable to get you out of office when you're not doing your job. What we have in the law system, when you run at large, even if you're not supporting your district, you spend your time campaigning in other districts so you can get elected to office. Then you do the will. Those people know district, so you can get elected again. The people do not benefit. I'd like to know what would you do to break about four single number district elections?
I was on the board when we voted for the, the expand the board. Now, the whole thought behind that process was to expand it to two at-large seats. And to visually, they would all be district seats. That was the whole purpose and the whole point behind that. And I support that one hundred percent. I actually support your idea behind it. But I also, I want to take this a little bit step farther. I also support term limits on this as well. Two term limits, three term limits, because if you can't get it done in two or three term limits, you're probably not going to get it done anyways. That's the facts, the facts there. So, yeah, I, I believe that, you know, we do need to have completely across the board districts and term limits. Thank you.
One minute answer.
Well, first of all, in addition to adding two seats to the board, the, the constituency in Lee County also wanted diversity on the board. That's what the purpose of it. That, and that was the belief. That's what the board approved. And so I tell you to follow what the constituency wants. We're not asking questions. Ask some questions. The, the, the other piece here is, is that, do I believe that terminetics, if the president of the United States of America is responsible for only two terms, what gives a local school board the right to go further than that with twelve years going on fourteen, sixteen years going on twenty? There's a problem with that. There's not inviting new ideas to come into the board.
You know, I'm mixed on this. I have watched people in elected offices do a great job for years to come, especially those that are running a program all to the especially those that are running a program all to themselves. And we know when that isn't happening, because it's fully aware to the public when things in one office is not going well. And so I would hate to move somebody out of an office when everything was, was doing well. On the other hand, I understand the need for turnover, so I'm gonna ride the fence on this one.
I'm gonna stick to the same thing to you. If you know what that's what she just said. If someone is not doing their job, you want to enact a, a term limit, that's fine. I believe, my own party asking me, I think term limits are important, but I think they're more important to you. You are the ones that make the decisions. So I think we ought to have a referendum right now, 217 or whenever, do we want to limit those terms? We're not, we can't judge it. There are some parts of our government here in Lee County that can decide whether they went with the honest or wrong one.
So now we're going to start with the audience questions. So we'll start with Dr. Gollum. You've got two minutes, so you can think, wherever you think you can squeeze in. How's that?
I'll, I'll, I'll probably say a little something about each of them. Uh, this one says, it has been mentioned on several occasions that about Dr. Adams' contract having been approved with the board president not present. Do you feel this board, not being present, do you feel this board conduct is appropriate? If yes, why? If no, why? Here, here's what I think you need to start with on the board. The board has to come together. A board well-functionable, come together in the very beginning, and establish the rules of board operation. We will do this, we won't do this. Once a decision is made, we won't go out and try to convince people otherwise or tell them it wasn't a good decision. And those are the things that you have to abide by. And when people on the board break the rules that you all have agreed to, then I think that person needs to be held accountable. So it's all about establishing those rules upfront, and, and rules of how you operate. It has, these have big rules that everybody agrees to. And how you communicate with each other, and how you communicate with the superintendent. Uh, so that's an upfront thing. What can you bring to the board to help with teacher retention? Well, the last time I looked at surveys that teachers do when they leave a district, they generally say why they left, and it could be they moved or whatever, but many of them aren't disgruntled in some way or another. A lot of the times, it's not, has not to do with the salary, but it has to do with the support that they get from the administration, the resources that they have to do the job that they're expected to do, and that they're kept in the mood. And so these surveys are out there. I haven't looked at the latest ones, but I think you have to look at what teachers say when they're leaving and address those issues. Teacher retention is critical. We need consistency in our district, the same as everything else. How do you feel about teachers having guns on campus if they have concealed carry permit? I think that that is fraught with all kinds of issues that I, I'm not an expert to address.
The question is, should the district angry, Don, in 217, would federally select single-member districts and demographics? Absolutely. The one being proposed right now, I think is pretty good. I'd like to see that beyond the ballot and that that would happen. Yes, we need to set up these districts so they have more representation further on. The other question, what law is being broken by getting higher and better standards? I hope I didn't send out that message when we were talking about upping our testing and so forth. Absolutely not. There's no law being broken. We need to do that. We need to make sure that we are accountable, I, I, I don't, as a teacher. Teacher-made tests are great. I teach something, I test on it. I don't test to find out how much you didn't know. I test to find out how much you know. Some of these questions, if you were to look at some of these tests. Let me see, I had 17 days out of the last 30 days of school to test it. Every kind of test you could think of. I read those tests. There were so many of them, so ambiguous, questions that I just understand. Could you imagine any one of us in this room taking that sixth grade math test? Only, I, I can't even imagine. The other question, uh, the district has a large minority student-to-teacher ratio. How will you enlarge the administrative goals to show more positive role models? We need to do that. Absolutely positive role models. Uh, in my school, we brought in athletes seem to be the biggest, um, way to get students to recognize, and we have to pick our good athletes. We got one here, and I'm good. So what we say, we need those people to stand up, come to our classroom. This is how I did it. Show that you are a good role model. Assistant, I've tried to do that all my life. My student. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Armstrong, you guys can read the question. So specific to Mr. Armstrong. The first time you were on the board for four years, you missed a lot of board meetings. How do we know you will be committed to your school board responsibilities this time?
Well, first, let's get this straight, all right? I know the person asked this, and they also actually know the answer. Um, and I'm disgusted they even asked this. Because now I have to say this in public. Not only do I have to say this in public, but I gotta say it when my kids are sitting here. So thanks. No, I know. They, they know. So in 2013, I found out my older sister, keeps smoking things, had cancer. In 2000, then I found out my dad had brain cancer. For about a year, I went back and forth with both of them. 2015, I lost them both. So yeah, there was some hard times there. And I struggled a little bit, hadn't known. But I did give my family over everything. And somebody wants to crucify me because I picked my family to be there? I'm sorry. But I'll always give my family to be there for them. Because I did everything, and I want family. And I honestly, folks, I don't have family anymore. That was my last two family members. So when I sit up here and tell you I do this for my kids, that is my only family. So thanks. Thanks for asking, congratulations.
And just so you know, this is our, this is the last answer, and then we're going to post the statements. Okay?
I have, I have several pieces here. We talk about role models for administrators, the increasing minority. Dr. Adams used to tell me, the former superintendent that was assassinated, said, it starts from the top. It starts from the top. We, we, we talk about the, the diversity that could take place with the, with the suggestion from the NAACP about the change in, in districts four and five. It starts from the top. We are already actively involved in a change right now with six and seven. It starts from the top. The, the, another question, it, it says, um, how many years does it take to turn around? Present fault. If we don't go outside of the box, we know that to deal with this now, half a billion dollars that we might have to deal with, uh, that is already signed, sealed, and delivered, that is going to take roughly 10 years or more. It's going to impact our kids. And that's not right. We need to go outside. One of the things going outside of the box is as we build new schools, building them with the same, with the same format. It saves costs. Schools don't have to look different, they can look the same. You can have interchanges, inter, interchanges with parks. You, you gotta go outside the box to do this kind of stuff. We need to look at this impact fees. You know, we're, we're not giving, we're only giving 45% of the money from the impact fee. I think that we need to, we need to develop a plan where we meet with the county commissioners once a month in order to discuss these issues. Last piece is, do you support, um, about, about the teacher recruitment? I stand before you right now, having recruited more teachers in this district than anyone in the district, single member. It's a proven record. I need your help. I need your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Closings. Anywhere we want to go in? That's it. Thanks. Three minutes.
Well, you've been very thorough here today. And I appreciate that. My, my closing is an appreciation for your group and everybody that's here in the audience. The problem is with electing school board members is that with a nonpartisan election, names are listed alphabetically. And I would say that about 85% of those that vote in this upcoming election and the absentee ballots go out the end of July, don't know who the individual board members are. And you are here because you care, because you want a school system that thrives, because you want the right decisions made. You've asked a lot of really good questions and questions that are important to know about when you put a name on that list, so thank you.
Thank you again for this privilege. What a privilege. As I said before, I want to be a person that represents everyone. My office will be open one day a week. Walk in, don't have to make a phone call. That's what I hear often. No one calls me back. Nobody really cares. I care. The other thing is this, I want to come to the point where the principal of Lee High School and the student enters the door as a freshman says to him, "You will receive a diploma four years from now." That's me, how, thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I want to thank all of you for showing up today, showing an interest in what's going on here, listening to each one of us talk. But one thing's for sure, when I look out there at everybody, everybody here looks like they're an A person. Y'all scored, had A's in school. So I want to make sure you remember that. Because when you go into the voting booths, you're gonna go straight to A. Aren't you?
And D stands for dental.
You know, but out of all the debates I've gone through, this is probably one of the funnest ones we have. I mean, we do kind of, I enjoy coming out here and talking. You know, I do break something different to the board. I've been known to go out and listen to our constituents. When I was on the board, I was one of the only board members that would go out to Dr. Sherwood Chapman's school. Correct? We had Patisse Allemonti, they wanted to close down. The Hispanic Society, they did a march. The only board member that showed up was me. Correct? See, ladies and gentlemen, I didn't look at what color you was, what you had as a last name, rich, poor. I looked at what was right and wrong. It didn't matter to me. I'd stand up for everybody. When they needed me, I was there. I'd stand outside when parents told me that the bus stop was unsafe. They'd call me and they said, "Come out there and see where you saw." Six o'clock in the morning. Six o'clock in the morning, I was standing there. I was working. I was standing up with the parents, with the students. Because I believe in order to be a good board member, you listen to everybody. And that doesn't mean you just sit up there and make decisions. You go out and talk to the community. And one thing I do vow, once I'm elected, again, I will come out to these different communities every three months, and I will give you an update of what's going on, and I will listen to your concerns. Because, folks, it's your school district. It's your tax dollars. So remember, when you go in that voting booth on August 30th, if you vote Don Armstrong, because when you vote for Don Armstrong, you're voting for yourself. Because I will be there to listen to you. We will fix this school district together. Thank you.
Well, well, should I start? Why don't I say that we've heard a multitude of, of opinions that impact our students. We've talked about, um, state core input. I have been upfront saying from the very beginning that when we have these briefing meetings that are taking place on, at 1:00 when parents are working, that needs to be removed. Briefing meetings need to be on a Saturday at 10:30 or 11:00, which allows parents that are working to participate in their concerns. I plan to, because I run at large, I plan to establish an office in every single zone, every single district in Lee County. And we'll be in that office once a week, so parents will have the opportunity to come and join me, and I can listen. I, I think another thing is, is, is important that, that we must remember that we are a great people, we are a great country, we are a great county, but we are as great as we allow ourselves to be. We are at the crossroads right now in terms of making history, in terms of making a difference. I'm not going to assume that, that I'm going to get your vote. I'm going to ask you. I'm going to ask you. Give me a chance. When, when, when Dr. Cocker came on, there was a seat. That doesn't mean that I can't make it at A. I can do that too. Give me a chance. Will you give me a chance? That's all I want. I will not, I will not let you down. Charles Daley, District Six at Large. Thank you, and God bless each and every one of you.
Oh, yeah? Okay. Yeah? Okay, that's great. Candidates love this question. Whoever put this together, they've asked if you could bring it to another forum. So, I don't know who that was, but, uh... Oh, okay. Pete, in the back? Okay, all right. So we'll make sure that happens. So, I want to thank everyone for coming today. Um, did, were all the new members of the organizing committee recognized yet? Oh, let's do that now. Would everyone stand up who's involved in organizing and heads of the organizations that represent the groups here? Please do. And actually, Mr. Charlie Flores in the backyard, stay up. Get back up. He's the one who reached and put this together with the expanded American Citizens Council. So, and now we have, well, probably 16 different organizations jump in. Oh, the candidates are here, of course. Silly me, I'm so sorry. We didn't do that yet. We need to jump right in. All right, any elected officials or candidates running for office, we stand up and say something really quick, under 20 seconds.
Charlie Flores, I'm running for Lee County School District Two. That is the seat that Mrs. Oger's had since 2000.
Carmen Salma, I'm your favorite candidate for supervisor of elections from Lee County.
My name is Tyler Woodbury. I am running for Lee Lake's Fire Board. I'm running for support.
And my name is Stephanie Eller, and I'm a Republican candidate for Lee County Sheriff. And history was made when my name appeared on that ballot. I am the first female ever to be on the ballot in the district.
I'm Chris Patrico, I'm ready for Lee County School Board District Three. And I am so jealous of you guys, because the new majority lines has put on a debate for every district, and my... my opponent has not yet agreed to face me in a debate. So if any of you have any influence with her, please get her to a debate. I'd love to do this. Thank you.
Kimberly Hurley, I'm running for Superbord District Two.
Good afternoon. Diane Zagrosi, proud to say, Lee County Commission District Five, candidate. I am a resident here in Lehigh and darn proud of it. During the faces today, please make sure that you take one of these with you. Please go to my website. I have everything imaginable you'd ever want to know about me. If you suffer from insomnia, the common joke is, go to my bio, guaranteed to put you in.
I've read her bio. I've been familiar with her.
My name is Edo Manaya. I'm running for Lee County School Board District Seven. And it is, you guys did an incredible job. So thank you for informing us of your positions. I learned quite a bit.
I'm Kathy Morgan. I currently represent Lee County School Board District Three, and I am a candidate for Lee County School Board District Seven at-large, elected countywide.
And I'm Chris Blackenbush, running for District Seven School Board, and I am one to bring back common sense, not common law to the classroom.
I'm the assistant chair, and I've been hiding my logo since I'm moderator, but I'm running for supervisor of elections. There you go. So thank you for today, for coming today, for some great answers. Really appreciate it. Uh, thank you for organizing committee and especially Dr. Hurney for putting, putting these questions together with me. So pretty much Dr. Hurney put the questions together.